Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending our City of Prospect Heights Council meeting, regular meeting. It is the 27th of August, approximately 6:35 PM. Can we have a... We're at 8 North Elmer St. Road, in case someone is looking for us. And we've been here for quite a while. So let's have an elected official roll call to make sure we have a quorum.
Alderman Williamson.
Here.
Alderman Rosenthal.
Here.
Alderman Dolick.
Here.
Let's see who else is here. Alderman Ludvigson.
Here.
And Alderman Messer is not present.
All right, so we have four of the five Aldermin here?
Yes.
Which means we have a quorum. Thank you. If we could ask someone in the audience, down this way and three seats over in the back seat, in the back row. Somebody count, help me count. Is there an aisle there? Good. We'll have the third person there say the Pledge of Allegiance, please. You, you're it.
We would like you to stand.
Come on up here, we need your presence. Right there. Thank you. You're on the air.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. We would like to ask Father Joseph Lee to come up and lead us in the invocation, or give us the invocation. There's enough people here now, Father. It's almost the size of St. Alphonsus tonight, so this is good. They must have known you were coming. If you would, please.
I'm more nervous than standing in the pulpit in the church now. May I say a few words?
Yes.
Before I give the opening prayer. So I'm not a Joe in town. I moved here from Liberty View. I'm a new pastor at St. Alphonsus. I came here on July 2nd, and I participate in the parade. And I'm really impressed with the joy and welcoming of this village of Mount Prospect. But second week, when I was at St. Alphonsus, we have a fight in Prospect Heights, and with my people, we try to do a lot of work to help the victim. So my impression is that the people in Prospect Heights are very generous, and we care for the poor and the victim. So I, after two months living here, I see that we have a wonderful spirit in our village, the spirit of welcoming, of friendliness, of generosity, and we care for the poor. And as the new leader of the church in Prospect Heights here, I will continue to notice and promote that spirit in our village. And thank you very much for having me here for the opening prayer today. So let us pray heavily. Father, we stand before you, conscious of our sinfulness, but aware that we gather in your name. Come to us, remain with us, and enlighten our heart. Give us light and strength to know your will, to make it our own, and to live it in our lives. Guide us by your wisdom, support us by your power. You desire justice for all, enable us to uphold the rights of others. Do not allow us to be misled by ignorance, or corrupted by fear or favor. Unite us to yourself in the bond of love, and keep us faithful to all that is true. As we gather in your name, may we temper justice with love, so that all our decision may be pleasing to you and earn the reward promised to good and faithful servants. We ask all this in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you very much, Father.
If we could move on to the approval minutes, please.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item five, we're asking if there are any corrections, additions, and if not, may we entertain a motion for approval of both A and B.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Go ahead, Joe.
All those in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Next item is six, presentations. And A is Willow Road presentation by Metropolitan Water Reclamation District. As council is aware, for a few years now, we've been working on a project in partnership with the MWRD, and also Cook County Department of Transportation, to address stormwater management issues, specifically street flooding at Willow Road. As you're aware, this last June, Willow Road was closed for six days, and the streets around it, Hillcrest and Owen, also experienced closure. What we're asking for tonight is for a presentation, we noticed the neighborhood. We have Mr. Cedric Robertson, who is the project manager for the MWRD, and also a new member of the team, Griselda Montevase, from the water products engineering. And they got presented tonight, but we're also asking later in the agenda for consideration of a resolution that would provide some affirmation of the council's support for the project. Basically, we've gone about as far as we can go informally. We need to go further, should the council desire. We also have Mr. Robertson, who'll talk about a proposed funding structure for the project. It's a large project, it's $3 million, of which $475,000 would be the city share. And at that, I'll turn it over to Cedric Robertson, who's spent a lot of time the last few years on this project. So we've gotten to know Cedric very well.
Thank you, Joe. Also want to mention Steve Perez, if you can stand up, please. We've worked with Joe and Steve the entire time on this project, from the beginning of 2014. I'm sorry, I pushed the microphone away on purpose, because that can be extremely loud, but that's okay. If you guys don't mind, if I get too loud, just tell me to calm down a little bit. I just wanted to give recognition to Mr. Wade and Mr. Perez for working on this project side by side with the district. Now I want to get started. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, and City Council members, and Prospect Heights residents. Here is the outline for this evening's presentation. The district's main goal is to present the recommended project, outline the project next steps, and address questions in regard to this recommended project. After our presentation, we hope that the mayor and the city council will have enough information in order to decide if the city wishes to move forward with the suggested Please note that the Cook County Department of Transportation and Highways requested that the district perform a preliminary design study for possible flood control solutions for their Willow roadway. Later in the process, the city requested that we take a look at Hillcrest Drive and Owen Street slash Court as well. This aerial photo represents the project area. Willow Road has three reinforced concrete coverts ranging in size from 36 to 42 inches, which connects the southern slough to the northern Hillcrest Lake. Water flows through the concrete coverts from south to north. Water from the lake flows out to McDonald Creek via a 24-inch diameter, 350-foot-long PVC covert underneath Hillcrest Drive. During flood events, water flows over Willow Road. During extreme events, water can escape over land through the backyard areas between houses, south of Hillcrest and north of Owen Court, and enter into the willing road drainage system, and then eventually back into McDonald Creek. The area I'm referring to is this area. Here, I want to show you the storm flood elevations versus the pavement elevations. Please note that Willow Road, at a two-year event, overtops, and is less than six inches depth of water on Willow Road. For significant flooding events, at a five-year event, is more than six inches. Hillcrest Drive and Owen Street slash Court floods at less than a two-year event. These are the low pavement elevations out at the project site. To give you a reference, a two-year storm event is equivalent to 3.04 inches in 24 hours. These are all 24-hour events. A five-year storm event is 3.8 inches of rain, and a 100-year storm event is 7.58 inches. Flooding issues are due to a combination of high McDonald Creek levels during storm events, and limited outlet capacity. The district's main purpose for this project is to protect the area homes and roadways from impacts of flooding. The recommended project involves raising Willow Road to a crown elevation of 653. Six 5-foot diameter coverts will be installed underneath the raised roadway. Note that the existing three covert pipes will remain in place. The roadway will be roughly 34 feet wide, 11-foot lanes in both directions with 6-foot shoulders. Roughly 900 linear feet of roadway will be raised. Since the roadway is a Cook County roadway, and weak soils were found underneath the existing roadway, we were requested to surcharge the roadway base slash embankment for six to nine months prior to installing final pavement. It was determined that the roadway may settle from eight to 12 inches over this period of time. Preloading the roadway will save future maintenance costs by not having to resurface the roadway in the near future. I also want to add that as per Cook County standards, parking on Willow Road will not be allowed. I apologize for the graphics here. I also brought myself, and Griselda also brought some drawings, if anyone wants to look at the drawings after this presentation. Here is the 30% design plan view of the proposed Willow Road, recommended project. And these are the six coverts. This is a typical roadway cross-section located at Station 106. I won't get into details, but I can show you where 106 is located on the drawings after the presentation. This is a cross-section of the coverts at Station 105 plus 50. And this cross-section shows the typical dimensions for Willow Road. 11-foot travel lanes with 6-foot paved shoulders. The dimensions are right here. The recommended project also involves raising Hillcrest and Owen Street slash Court to a crown elevation of 652. Six 2-foot diameter coverts will be installed underneath Owen Street slash Court. Note that the existing covert pipe draining the land side to the lake will remain in place. The roadways will remain 20 feet in width as existing. A total of roughly 2,300 linear feet of roadway will be raised. Since the local roadways are lightly used residential roadways, surcharging of the local roadways are not recommended. Some areas of the local roadways were built on soft organic material, and some sediment will occur over time, but not to the extent Willow Road will, if we do not surcharge it. Another plan view and cross-section of Station 208 at Hillcrest. This is Station 214 at Hillcrest. And then a plan view and cross-section at Station 303 plus 50 on Owen Street slash And also depicted here are the dimensions for the Hillcrest and Owen Street slash Court roadways. Shown are the 10-foot wide travel lanes with 2-foot aggregate shoulders. This recommended project will place roughly 4,800 cubic yards of field in a flood plain, which means we need to provide 7,200 cubic yards of compensatory storage in order to meet the city's compensatory storage requirement of 1.5 to 1. Five storage areas were considered, and as of now, only areas 1, 2, 4A, or 4B are being considered to meet the city's requirements. This is Area 1, north of Willow Road and the southeast corner of Hillcrest Lake. And this is the estimated amount of excavation we can get done in that area. Area 2, south of Prospect Heights Library, west of Tributary A. Area 3, north of Hillcrest at Confluence of McDonald Creek and Tributary A. The one thing I want to note is that we're not considering this area, because the owner of this parcel is not willing to sell this property. Area 4A, north of McDonald Creek at Confluence of McDonald Creek and Trib A. This option impacts a private parcel along with Walnut Woods Park. I'm not sure if you can see the outline, but this is the outline. Area 4B, north of McDonald Creek at Confluence of McDonald Creek and Trib A. This option lessens the impact on Walnut Woods Park, but involves two private parcels. This is the current proposed cost share, in which the city is being asked to contribute $475,000. $400,000 for construction, and $75,000 for land acquisition for compensatory storage area 4A or 4B. This is the 2016 price level estimate that was completed. I need to remind everyone that this preliminary study was completed in December 2016. Now I want to back up a little bit and explain to everyone our conceptual design process. Cook County presented this Willow Road project to MWRD as a conceptual Phase II project. This means that this project must go through the reflected phases. Preliminary design study, which is already completed, and this phase develops an economical and effective flood control alternative for the project area. In order to seek approval from the District Board of Commissioners to move forward for final design, all stakeholders, the city, Cook County, and the district, must agree in principle on cost sharing, maintenance responsibilities, et cetera. IGA negotiations must be completed before the end of the final design process. Also note that the final design will be paid for by the district, in which we will seek approval to retain Globe Trotters Engineering Corporation as the final design firm. During final design, the project will be reviewed by the stakeholders, and will also be presented to the public at the 60% and 98% design level. Feedback from the two stages are incorporated into the design, only if all parties agree. Lastly, bid documents are produced, that's the construction phase shown, and either the district will let the project, or one of the stakeholders will let the project, but we will negotiate that at the IGA phase. In general, the city and the district need to agree in principle in regard to the suggested flood control alternative, and on cost sharing, before we can present the project to the District Board for final design approval. We also ask that the city continue to seek other funding sources or grant opportunities to help lessen the cost of the overall project. We are almost there. Just please bear with me. I want to read through the questions that were submitted, and provide our response to those questions. If the elevation of the road is raised between a lake and a slough, will it need a guardrail? A guardrail is planned on both sides of Willow Road, as indicated in the 30% plans. And once again, we have the plans here. Will there be enough room with the raised road to accommodate a pedestrian pathway? Will the bridge configuration have any planning for pedestrian access? The proposed Willow Road will have a total width of 34 feet, two 11-foot wide travel lanes with 6-foot wide paved shoulders for a future multi-use path. What is the plan for how the road end will meet the water around the lake? Is there a plan for how the slope from the road to the edge of the lake will be vegetated? In most areas, the slope will be mowed and will accommodate naturalized plantings. There are some exceptions, such as covert locations on Willow Road and Owen's Court, where the slope is too steep due to space limitations. For steep areas, riprap may be necessary to prevent erosion. No seawalls are planned. The Army Corps of Engineers prefer naturalized banks, and the district will coordinate this work with the Army Corps for permitting purposes. What will impact be on hydrology of slough and lake? Will the project impact the water levels of the slough and lake? What is the impact of this project on the overall watershed? The proposed coverts under Willow Road are designed to maintain the same hydraulic conditions as currently exist. The slough and lake levels would not be impacting. Besides raising the profile elevation of Willow Road, Hillcrest Drive, and Owen Street slash Court, and providing stormwater storage via compensatory storage basins, there is no impact to the overall watershed. How high will the road be elevated in these project areas? Willow Road will be raised to an elevation of 653 crown elevation, and Hillcrest Drive and Owen Street slash Court will be raised to 652. Is the differential in elevations between the residence driveways and new road height been accounted for? Will the district execute that work, or will that fall back on the individual residents? How will this be paid for? The elevation difference between the residence driveways and the new roadway heights has been accounted for, and is incorporated within the design. The driveways will be adjusted via the construction contract, and the overall cost of the project will be shared amongst the district, the city, and Cook County. What is the plan for grading away from the elevated road? What is the plan for the graded surfaces? Will they be naturalized, and by whom? On the land side of Hillcrest Drive and Owen Street slash Court, most areas will be sodded. For embankment areas at or near the waterline, landscaping will include a 15-foot buffer strip of native vegetation that is more tolerant of water inundation. Landscaping will be developed in more detail during final design, and coordinated with all stakeholders and permitting agencies, such as the Army Corps of Engineers. Would it be possible to obtain a set of drawings for Prospect Heights Natural Resources Commission? To what degree will the commission be able to have input into the project? The commission would like to be actively involved in native plan selection, will that be possible? Will the district plan be able to be modified to incorporate recommendations from the commission, once we have had an opportunity to digest the plans? The 30% preliminary design report and plans were provided to the city of Prospect Heights. The commission can request a copy from the city. Also note that if final design is approved, 60% and 98% drawings will be coordinated with the city and Cook County. Public meetings will also be held to discuss the 60% and 98% drawings with the affected city residents. The commission can submit their recommendations via two different avenues. Submitting recommendations through the city, or providing feedback during public meetings at the 60% and 98% stages. Recommendations/feedback are incorporated only if all stakeholders agree. This is a landscaping plan view. I just want to note, it's hard to see here, but the crosshatch X pattern represents topsoil with C, cross symbols represent native vegetation, and then the dense crosshatch patterns represent sod. It'd be best if I show you those drawings after the presentation. The same holds true for Hillcrest Drive, and also for Owen Street slash Court. What will the resulting footprint of the work have on existing conditions? The 30% plans outline the limits of preliminary roadway reconstruction and regrading of the adjacent areas. Wetland impacts are minimal, and as for now, there is a need to relocate a gas line located in a proposed covert footprint on Willow Road. Compensatory storage is also required for this project. What is the anticipated effect on the hydrology of the overall wetland? Has this been taken into account in the planning stages? What are the plans for the spill pipe that exits the wetland? Was it accounted for in the overall planning? Will the plan address/change the lake's outflow pipe? Wetland areas were surveyed and identified during the preliminary design study. Wetland areas exist on the slough, but do not exist on the lake, or on the short open channel of Tributary A, near the confluence with McDonald Creek. Impacts to the wetland could be very minor, or maybe avoided. If there are impacts, impacts will be coordinated and mitigated through the Army Corps of Engineers via their permit process. Also note that all existing covert pipes will remain active and in place, and the proposed project does not anticipate changes to the outlet pipe or lake water levels. It's hard to see, but the red line around here represents the waters of the US, and the green outline represents wetlands. The wetlands are located here. What are the plans for compensatory storage, and how would those areas be treated? Turf, grass, naturalized, has it been considered? Planting treatments has not been considered during this 30% design study. The basins can be either wet or dry bottom, and wetland plantings can be considered. These decisions will be made during final design. How is it possible that increasing the outflow capacity by 600%, and having the pipes lower than the existing outflow pipe, does not lower the already extremely low levels of Hillcrest Lake? Based on the 30% drawings, the existing coverts between the slough and the lake, the covert embers are below the proposed coverts. We are raising the Willow roadway in order to accommodate the large coverts the large coverts which will allow stormwater to flow from the slough to the lake as the water elevation rises during a rainstorm. We are not altering the outfall of the lake which is located on the north side of the lake. Also note that the normal water level of the slough and the lake are the same, six forty-seven point five during dry weather conditions. How does the district plan on controlling the sediment flow into Hillcrest Lake? What can be done to address this problem? And they're referring to algae and weeds flowing into the lake from the slough. Address this problem from occurring. Please note that this district's main goal is to solve flooding problems. If the city has specific recommendations to address the sediment and algae slash weeds concern, then the district could consider incorporating those elements into the design. If incorporated, the district will ask the city to contribute funding toward the construction of those elements. Once again, this is a poor drawing, but I'll show you after the presentation. It reflects the invert elevations of the existing coverts in comparison to the proposed coverts. And this aerial photo reflects the effects of the September sixteenth, two thousand and eight storm in which the water surface elevation was at approximately six fifty-one point six. This storm represents a event between the fifty and one hundred year flood event. And this photo reflects a six-month storm event in which approximately two inches of rainfall fell over a twenty-four hour period. This is less than a two-year frequency event. Now, I want to open it up to any questions and/or any feedback from the mayor, the city council, and/or the residents.
Let's stay with the city council at the moment. Gentlemen, ladies, let's start with Alderman Ludwigsen.
I have a question about the sediment issue and what can, you're saying we could do something for that separately, but it wouldn't be part of the project itself as far as trying to contain any kind of sediment that moves from north to, or from south to north? That would be on us to do or incorporate into the project.
No, sir. I'm saying that, let me clarify. If the city wishes to conduct a separate study to figure out different ways to solve the sediment and/or algae problem and you want us to incorporate it into the construction drawings, we can't.
Well, I guess I'm not talking about what already exists or is there. I'm talking about any new sediment that would come. Is there a requirement that sediment be evaluated with this project whether it's going to cause an increase amount to the lake? Is that part of the construction design that you'll do? Will there be a portion of the study or design that will evaluate whether or not that lake is filling up and with sediment and if something should be done?
At this time, it's not part of the final design study. And that's because our main goal is flood control, is to solve structure flooding. But I can take your concern back to my management and see if they're willing to incorporate it into the project.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Dolik.
I have no questions at this time. That was a wonderful presentation though. Thank you.
Alderman Rosenthal.
I have three questions, if I can go. My first question, I want to really more direct toward the Natural Resources Commission. I understand that you were involved in some of the initial review. You participated and the two leaders of the commission are here. I would like to know what your reaction is and what your level of satisfaction or dissatisfaction is in your role, in what role you will have going forward with this, if this project goes forward. So either one of you can answer for me.
I think one of the things that I see initially.
Could you stand up, please?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry.
Can I identify myself?
Dave Seersum with the Natural Resources Commission. One of the immediate concerns that I see is regarding Willow Road. And again, we have this plan for increased public access and that pretty much takes it all out of play. You have nine hundred feet of guardrail and you have no parking on Willow Road and you have a six-foot wide shoulder for people to fish on or stand on that is part of the roadway as opposed to being on the other side of the guardrail. I see that as being a concern. You know, in terms of the overall plan that we put out there and approved with the last council meeting. I think we can certainly work with the Metropolitan Water Reclamation and the Army Corps to talk about the natural plants. I mean, there's only, you know, so much that can go in and make sense and I don't anticipate there'll be a lot of disagreement. It's just, this is the first time we've been able to, you know, get the plans and take a look at them, so we're still digesting them. But at this point, I mean, it is what it is. And, you know, you see the turf grasses going on the other side of the road going around the lake and we're calling out for repairing the buffer to go fifteen feet from the lakeside down to control erosion. All that's fantastic. So I think ultimately the devil's in the details of, you know, trying to work with everybody to solve that and working with residents to make sure that everybody's on par with that.
Yeah, that was my other concern is that there was mention of residents but no real definition or at least an understanding on my part, and maybe I've just missed it, of how and what method by which the residents of that area will be involved in that input. I haven't seen that yet and I certainly would like to see it as we go forward.
Well, you said in our, on our plan, we proposed it that, you know, when we get this digested and understand how this affects what we have proposed with public works for increasing the access and all that, then it's time to, you know, reconfigure that plan and then open it up for residents.
Actually, I apologize because I wasn't clear. That question I'm really directing to the district.
I do have another concern and that is if there's no alteration to the spill pipe. I mean, if you're saying that the majority of the flooding is coming from Creek not being able to take the water away. Okay, so we've got this increased compensatory storage. If that fills up and then exceeds the capacity, is the road being raised high enough to compensate for that sort of water flow? Do you see what I mean?
Yes, sir. The road is being raised one foot above base flood elevation. Base flood elevation is six fifty-two. The compensatory storage, we're providing storage for two-year events between two-year and a one-hundred-year event, so we should be covered. Anything beyond the one-hundred-year event, I cannot ask.
Okay, let me finish my questions first, Dana, if the mayor will permit me.
Go ahead, please.
My second question really, and I don't expect an answer tonight, but I need to have some detail on it. As to what impact the changes and the retention ponds and the rest of the part of the project, what impact will that have on Ward Two specifically? The portion of the ward that's in the McDonald Creek area, which is the east side of the ward. And my final question is, being a city boy, I don't know what a riffraff is. Can you explain that?
Riprap is just rocks. It's just a pile of boulders or rocks of certain size.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Alderman Ludwigsen.
Thank you. Cedric, I'd like to start out by saying, first of all, thank you for even considering this project, much less as far as you guys have gone with it and, you know, the consideration of taking this too and making it fruition. I know it was a large undertaking, so thank you very much. Just a few questions. When you're talking about the roadside being Willow Road, really you're just talking about a gravel and bank and similar to what's there today.
Yes.
Raising the road, you're going to taper it out and really it's much the same as what exists today.
Yes.
So there would be no need for live vegetation to stabilize the road? In fact, it wouldn't be enough to stabilize the road.
Well, it's a fifteen-foot buffer in the lake area. So that's the only area that proposes the naturalized vegetation.
Okay. And then Alderman Ludwigsen brought up my concerns about the sediment prevention. The guardrails that we were talking about, did you mention an overall length of? I heard Dana mentioned nine hundred feet, but I didn't, did you?
No.
How long they would actually be?
That's one of the things I forgot to look at, so I can get that answered.
In doing those guardrails, I'm assuming your guardrail is the standard galvanized guardrail, steel guardrail?
It's whatever the standard that Cook County accepts. We're following their standard.
Okay, but would we be able to upgrade it to something that's more aesthetically pleasing? You know, something concrete or, it's an option for the project?
It's an option.
As long as it's approved by?
It is an option, but I will say that we will ask for contribution towards.
Of course. Okay, and then the, you're talking about twenty-two foot of roadway and then six foot of shoulder of which that guardrail is within that shoulder, correct?
Yes. And I failed to mention earlier, this is a six-foot shoulder, but there's additional two feet here. I didn't put that detail up, but the guardrail is cutting into that eight-foot shoulder.
Oh, so the guardrail is actually outside of that six-foot shoulder?
Yes.
So there's room to pull off of the road between the guardrail and the roadway?
I can't answer that because Cook County doesn't like.
There is a space of six feet between the white line on the edge of the road and the guardrail, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then the buffer beyond the guardrail is fifteen feet? Is that what you're saying?
I'll have to look at the drawings again, but it's two feet right here, additional two feet, so that's eight feet. And I don't remember.
Okay, and then if that scale, you're looking six foot, eight foot, somewhere in that neighborhood?
Yeah, yeah.
And that's pretty consistent on either side? Okay. How wide will Hillcrest and Owens be?
That's twenty feet, I believe. Ten-foot wide, ten-foot wide travel lanes.
Okay, so a little bit wider than they are today. So I believe today, if I'm right, Dan, is it nineteen feet wide, Steve?
I think they're pretty close.
Pretty similar. All right, and now going over to Hillside, obviously you raised Willow Road. You're going to have to raise Hillside as well over on the south end. How much of Hillside is going to be impacted by that?
I would have to break out the dimensions. I gave you the total, two hundred and three hundred feet, but I would have to break that out and give it to you either right after this presentation.
Okay, we can talk about it any time. Just one of the questions that I had. And that really sums up my questions and I can gain the answers that you weren't able to give me in later time.
Mr. Mayor. I have one more follow-up question. You had said that the road's being built to a one-hundred-year event, which you said would be six fifty-two at the crown of Willow Road, correct? That's the height.
Willow Road would be six fifty-three.
So, okay, so six fifty-two is the event height?
It's the base flood elevation.
So it's going to be six fifty-three and I think you showed on the side streets that are going to be, where the driveways are, is that six fifty-one? Is that, are they one foot lower than Wheeling Road? They're not the same.
I don't think we got into those details for this design for the driveways.
I guess my question is, the reason I'm asking is, if we get a one-hundred-year event that will prevent flooding over Wheeling Road, but what will it do for all the side streets associated with it?
You're referencing Willow Road, right?
I'm sorry, Willow Road.
Okay, for the one-hundred-year event, water should not overtop Willow Road.
Okay.
But the local roads are at six fifty-two, which is base flood elevation. So water would be right at the road.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask one more question?
Yes, sir.
Cedric, the coverts going under Willow Road, are those metal coverts or are those concrete coverts?
Those are concrete coverts.
Are they round or are they rectangular or? Or round? Okay, so you're standard round, okay.
All right, we do have two other elected officials. Our treasurer, Mr. Tibbetts, who hides behind that mirror. Do you have anything else to add, Mr. Tibbetts?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. And our city clerk, Wendy Morgan.
I think all my questions have been answered by the alderman.
Good, I have one last question then. You know, people come to me and come to our council members. The real question's going to be, when does the shovel hit the road? How soon can they look forward to something? I know there's things to do yet, there's agreements to be made and issues to be solved, but ballpark, are we protected by this winter coming up? Will we be protected by then or is it a spring job or what?
In general, it would probably take a year or a year and a half for final design. So we're probably looking at shovels and ground twenty-twenty. That's if we get approval this year and we get the consultant started on final design this year.
All right, on one hand, it seems like a long time. On the other hand, it's been a much longer time to get to this point. So thank you for your presentation. You did a great job. We do have a side room over there if there's someone interested in meeting with you. I can't break up the council at this moment to get that done. So if there's someone that wants to raise their hand and get a side view of some of the plans and things you have available, are you willing to do that now or are you willing to set up another meeting with people that are more interested?
Mayor, I'm willing to do it right now.
Okay. Is there anyone that would like to meet with this gentleman? We have a small conference room down the hall. We have one, two, three, four? All right, let's limit it to eight or nine because we only have eight or nine chairs. All right, so thank you. Thank you, let's do that. If you would, yeah, thank you for opening it up, Dan, and turning on the lights. And it's right down the hall here. There's also washrooms right there, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
We have all the facilities. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
The next item on the agenda, it's also Stormwater Management Night. Council asked for a report on possible projects and Steve Perez, our city engineer from Goulart-Hamilton is here and he's got to present that.
All right, let's hold off a minute until the room clears. Either you're leaving, but you're not, all of you going down to that room because you won't fit. All right, then stand up.
Find out about this building of the slough around the slough?
Not at this meeting.
Not at this meeting because they took our little forms for questions.
Right.
For public comments.
I mean, you're not going to go ahead with this without telling us more.
Right. Let's finish off in there and I can come back to that issue if you like.
Okay, I'd like that because this concerns all the people that are living around there.
But you also know it's two years away and it's.
Two years comes very fast.
Thank you. I recognize that myself. All right, thank you. So come back, please. Mr. Perez, you're on the air.
Good evening, Mayor, Alderman. Thank you. About a few weeks ago, I prepared a memo. Hopefully you maybe had a chance to take a look at it and do a brief summary and I was going to have a discussion of what you may have. So as you know, history of the city has been longstanding problem concerning the flooding throughout the city. There's many different issues. I won't go into the detail, but, you know, the city was kind of built without current engineering standards and that has created a lot of these issues that we experience on a monthly basis and during, after severe rain events. The city was designed with ditches as one part of the drainage. And also in rear yards were not designed with storm showers in rear yards. A lot of rear yards just drained each other and nowhere to go other than sit on the ground. Kind of another major. Kind of another major concern in the city is large depressional areas are kind of bowls that fill up in large blocks, a few blocks, but can spread over neighborhoods and kinda fill up as it rains. And there's no positive outfall to any river or what having, it just kinda fills up the area. But over tops of road, or what, kinda like Rand Road. The neighborhood west of Rand Road is kind of a depressional area, it kind of fits that bill. Overall, the city kinda drains from the northwest to the southeast, kind of eventually to the Plains River, but it's kind of a complex watershed. And your situation isn't unique. There's a lot of communities around here that struggle with stormwater, rain events, and houses flooding, structure flooding, and a lot of issues. So it's something that a lot of communities have experienced and studied for a long period to try to correct and remedy. With that, I kinda looked at, talked to city staff, Mark Roscoe and I talked more than a few occasions, Dan Peterson, I talked to Joe Wade and others. And through my experience here of being here for four years, looking at the flooding firsthand, talking to a lot of residents, and just seeing it, I created a list of what I think is kind of the top nine areas that could be looked at further. Now, back in two thousand and twelve, Christopher Burke Engineering looked at five areas and did more, I would call a concept level study of what could be done to help flooding. From a concept level, there's still the next stage of a perimeter design and then a final design. The presentation before me was almost, was a perimeter design. So to date, pretty much the city's only doing a concept design of, to really address serious flooding issues. So with that, I created this list in order of one through ten that I kinda thought could be prioritized for consideration of what the city might wanna do. As I mentioned, the situation's not unique. A lot of communities have tried to solve or mitigate what they would call a ten-year rain event. Cedric talked about a hundred-year rain events. A hundred years is a lot more water and designing new storm sewers or new drainage systems to try, try to help remedy that is kind of very cost prohibitive usually to get done and achieve that. I'm not saying it's not impossible, but if you try to mitigate larger and larger storms, the costs just keep going up and they tend to probably go exponentially, lead to make it work. I wanna be forthright and there's a reason, you know, these are not easy issues to solve. They're complex, they do take time, and they do take money. But they can be resolved. I think the first step is to see what direction the council may wanna take the next step to move project forward or what have you. So with that, that's kind of my base. I could go through the numbers if you want, or I guess you know I have in front of you, but that's my presentation.
Joe, what are your plans?
Basically, I think we're, this was a request of council. Are there any questions or comments about?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. We could be here all night. This is my favorite topic because it's, there's so much we need to do that there's, you know, anything we do is gonna help, from the smallest little item to trying to find land, to obtain water or whatnot. But conceptually, I, I, we've, we've kinda went from one extreme to another with some specific problems that would have required a la, large outlay of money to just address one or two houses. To if we spent that same amount of money, we could take care of a region and take care of like a, you mentioned across Rand Road. To me, that's like a, a regional flooding issue. It's not a spot issue like we have at Elm and, and Willow Road. To me, that's a spot problem. There's some drain tiles that are broken, collapsed, filled in, used to drain, you know, I remember when, you know, there was no issue there, now there is. So, but if you fix a problem like the, the Elm Willow issue, you might fix, you might help fifteen, twenty houses. You fix the other area across Rand Road, you're gonna fit, you're gonna help, you know, eighty houses or so. So I guess my concern is that we spend our money because we don't have a lot of it to spend in a way that helps the most or, or has the biggest effect on the most people. But that we're not doing something that's kinda like a temp fix so that if we ever go back to really get into that project bigger, that what we did wasn't just a Band-Aid, which now has to be undone to do something else. So I guess my only, what I'd like to say to you is when you're looking at these projects is to kinda look at them from the standpoint of, if we said we had a million dollars to spend on drainage. Where would you spend it? What's the biggest impact to either completely cure a problemed area or to help as many residents as we can with that building? And hopefully build on that improvement down the road with future projects. Are there any areas specifically in mind that come, that come up that would meet those requirements? I mean, not a million dollars. I, I don't wanna put a dollar amount in front of you, but something that could be fixed that would.
Stay fixed.
Huh?
Stay fixed.
That would help most of the people.
Well, to address a few issues, I think any study that we did, we would do moving forward, we could run a benefit cost analysis, kinda say how many homes that would affect and the cost per home, what that would affect, so that could be done with a future analysis. To use the word fix and stormwater, they don't really go together and that's just the reality of, of rain. Any repair or improvement will definitely help lessen future flooding. It will not eliminate it. I'll make that clear. But that said, any improvement we would do would not be, it would, it would be worthwhile and it would be something we would not have to redo, to answer your Band-Aid question, so we would, would never recommend that. It's just what tier do you wanna try to accomplish? And it's, and it's not an exact science, but you can help bring it to more of a science by doing a benefit cost ratio of how many residents improve and what would be the cost of that. So I don't know if I answered most of your.
I mean, are there any areas you can look at when you, when you look at the Rand Road property, when you look at the Elm Willow issue, you look at Lake Clare, Patricia Lane, I mean, these different areas that you see? Are there any that stand out to you like, geez, you know, if we just cross-connected this, this here, we would drain this, this bowl and it's really not a big deal, it's just something that hasn't been done?
Well, I mean, I've looked at it. Some of them have challenges. How do you get the permitting, like west of Rand, some of it's probably a larger storm sewer that would help to get it to receiving storm sewer. But how do you necessarily get the approve, the approvals from other agencies to build this larger storm sewer when other agencies maybe don't want more water? So there's kind of some other regulations that have to come in to play to how to move water to different spots. Depressional areas have kind of like the prior presentation, pets or storage. There was a reason why you have to provide for it elsewhere because you can't ultimately just dump all the water downstream to the neighbors. So you have to do it in a controlled and a permanent manner, how other communities would have to do it at the same with someone trying to dump water to the city of Prospect Heights. I don't know if I tried to oversimplify it. But there's things that need, regulations that need to be filed of building more improvements, whether or not they can be done first, but then to ensure that you're meeting the current permitting requirements.
Some, like Rand Road could be fixed.
It could be.
If IDOT would.
Yes.
If IDOT would just say, go ahead, put it into the Rand Road drainage system.
It's IDOT Cook County because it's Cook County Road too, but yes, there could be a, a fix for that.
Almost minimal cost for that, I mean.
No, I don't agree with that.
To connect to that deep, I mean, because I know there's a really deep drainage system along Rand Road that when we flood, that's where it eventually goes anyway. And why it just doesn't go there to start, I don't know, but.
Yeah, the storm sewer along Rand is, they actually have two storm sewers on both sides of the road, Rand, and the state is concerned about, it was their storm sewer that was installed, I believe. And they're concerned about protecting their road and making sure that their road drains first. So, but there is a solution for it. I'm not trying to say there's not. It's just, I, I don't think it's a quick fix solution. It needs, it's, if it was that easy, it probably would have been done a while ago, so.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
It can be done. I'm not trying to say.
Alderman Dolick?
Just quickly, along those same lines, you, you mentioned earlier, we have conceptual plans and preliminary plans. On these significant areas, do we have plans in place if we got cooperation from other agencies? That if money was available, can we work with them? In other words, I'm looking at like a timeline, not at anything precise, but do we have plans in place that we could fix these or is it still more in an early planning stage?
It's the early planning stage. We do not have any, and maybe that's an action step, the council or for future meetings to say, we'd like one or two areas studied to create plans and to move those forward. And not look at ten areas and try to systematically say, these are the areas that we wanna look at in the city. So that's kinda why I tried to outline a one through nine of what I thought would be areas to possibly study first and start creating the next step and then ultimately plans.
Because I agree with Alderman Ludwigson, it, it seems like it would be wise to address the areas that affect the most people, the most houses, and, and look at that. So, all right, thank you.
Alderman Rosenthal?
I think you've answered my question to Alderman Dolick, but I wanna make sure. What you are proposing or the scope of your proposal here is to take these nine areas or whatever the, whatever the other areas are in number nine? And really develop a plan for it? Is that the scope of your proposal? Or, or identify what has, what can be remediated and how it can be remediated?
Right. The, the gist of my memorandum was to facilitate a discussion and then have some direction of what the next step is to develop the plan further.
So.
So if the direction was, let's look at the first two areas and set them in detail, and that would be the step to create a detailed.
So that I understand the outcome of this, assuming it's approved, that, that outcome will be a plan more detailed as to how to remediate the situation?
Correct. And it wouldn't be quite a, a construction drawing out. The next would be.
I, I know, it's not, it's a conceptual plan.
But that would have more, a lot more detail about, hey, this is what we need to build, this size storm sewer, this, some costs, some benefit costs, and yes, it'd be a detailed, yes.
And my second question is, you, you, and there's someplace you specified a range of between ten thousand and twenty-five thousand. What was the difference for that wide variance?
No, ten million to twenty-five million.
A million, rather, or actually doing the project?
That was putting, the report that was done in two thousand and twelve by Burke, their improvements totaled fifteen million of what their improvements recommended. Since then, we have, the city has not done any further work on any of those. It's, the stormwater is, I mean, there's communities that spent a hundred million plus, two hundred million plus easily. I mean, there's a range of trying to improve this. And what it does is lessen the flooding and lessen the frequency of it.
So part of the scope of your study will be to assign dollars to it?
Yes, construction dollars of, if we were to look at one or two of these here in detail, it would, whatever improvement is being recommended, it would assign dollars to it.
Thank you.
Alderman Williamson?
I have no questions. All my questions were addressed through the other aldermen.
All right. We have it. Joe?
Thank you.
What's, what's the next step, so? Just 'cause I don't want it to rain again and people say we're not moving forward.
I think the next step would be, I don't know, Joe, if you wanna, to me, it would be if the council is, wants to kinda move forward with looking at one or two of these in greater detail.
Yeah, I think we, maybe also too, we might as well come out front, at least internal discussions, and most of this is, is based on our experience when, when we have bad events. I'd, I'd say probably between you and I and Mark Roscoe, we'd probably pick Arlington Countryside and the East Side.
I think it's a great place.
To make it digestible, those are the two standout. There are other areas that are problematic, but I think following that, kind of the index of how many people could we, could we improve, those would be the two target areas.
Okay, I agree.
I. Come back on that, is, are these nine the way they're ranked? Are they in priority order now?
They're in what I, my gut kinda says, and I hope that the engineering would show, but we, we would run benchmarks, benefit costs for the two that we pick and you compare it to other industry expectations projects, so it would be a known. But yes, I feel confident with the list that I presented.
Sure.
So then we, we would want to, if this is priority order, we would wanna address it in a, in a, that would be a more systematic way to address it.
Yeah.
And I know you've developed criteria for other projects that we've had, which has worked out very well for us. So I'd like to see this, if you prioritize these, if they are not already, prioritize them and then go from there.
But just ask, prioritize on what basis? Cost, improvements, how many people it affects?
All of the above. Number of people.
You, you can't have six variables that we're trying to solve for. We can, we, we've either gotta decide it's gonna be, we're gonna create a, a pot of money, I mean, we're gonna say, this year we're spending one point four million on roads. Is next year a drainage year where we say we're gonna spend a million year, a million dollars on drainage? Give Steve then the authority to use the million dollars in his mind, because if he doesn't, if he's, if, if we go through that and tell him rank it all, we say, okay, go with, go ahead with seventy-five grand, he'd be like, boy, I wasted my time of putting together all these, the list of projects to do.
Well, some of the criteria we talked about, this was in strategic directions, as you mentioned earlier, is the amount and the area and the, and the population that's impacted by us doing or not doing this. I think that's, to me, that might be the number one.
Right, but it's logical that the bigger the area you're gonna fix, the more you're gonna spend. So I think we need to come up with the amount that the council's comfortable with going forward for next year's capital budget expenditure to say, Steve, look at this. Here's a million dollars in your own mind, you've got your top ten list, you know, what, what, what's your biggest bang for your buck with a million dollars? Show us the two projects that that would be and then from there go forward, correct?
Yeah, well, what, we should be looking at things at some kind of, you have, you had a gut feel priority order, this is.
Yeah, what I listed was my gut feeling of priority that I listed.
So what were the, what were the factors you used in your gut feel priority order?
Based on looking at the Burke reports that were done in two thousand and twelve, so I reviewed those and those were pretty detailed reports, looking at those costs, looking at the number of homes that were in it, looking, you know, and then my history of, of seeing the flooding in the city. Putting it all together and that's kind of what I thought would help the most residents and get your best bang for the buck.
Would you agree at the preliminary area where we are now, that would work and then once we go to implementation or execution, these other things have to come into play?
Unfortunately, for, for us, dollars.
Well, dollars, that's.
I need, I need to interrupt both of you. This is a workshop item that we can put on the next workshop session, which is on the twelfth, I think. Is that right, Joe?
Yes.
All right, this is more than just what are we gonna do tonight type issue.
Okay.
So let's put it on a workshop and it'll be a primary issue on that workshop. Everybody in agreement? Everybody said yes? I heard you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. All right, we're looking at appointments and confirmations. Are there any?
We have none tonight, sir.
All right, moving on, there's a public comments section here for Agenda Matters. I will accept Agenda Matters not pertaining to the crowd that's out there. Because they'll come in and when they come in, we'll talk about their issue, which I presume is a single issue. So does anyone else other than that issue that would like to address council, has registered, I presume? Anyone else here?
Wendy has.
Wendy has it?
No, there's no one else other than this one specific issue.
So there's nothing else pending in people's minds other than what's gonna come up a bit later. Staff, elected officials, and commission records. Joe, you wanna do the roll call coming down the line?
Sure, if we could start with the elected officials, Alderman Williamson?
I have no report, thank you.
Michael, about, no, this will be everybody, just come right down the line. Our CFO, please?
Michael Ducharme, Director of Finance. I have a couple items on the agenda, later on in the agenda.
All right.
Which will take then.
Let's move forward, we've got.
Mark Roscoe, Public Works.
Mark, where are you?
Very good, sir, thank you. Appreciated the presentation from W R D. I do have questions for him, but everything that I have coming forward will be at the sixth year, the ninety percent, ninety-eight percent meeting, so. As I've talked to a few of the other aldermen about issues, so other than that, life is good. Thank you, sir.
All right, it was easy with all the lightning the other night, two nights ago.
It's quite a.
Got through it all right?
We came through it.
I bet you didn't sleep, right?
We, we couldn't sleep, but we came through it very well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Peter, you're next.
Hi, Peter Falcone, Assistant to the City Administrator. No reports, sir.
Dan?
Real quickly, we've had a busy week. McDonald's on Milwaukee's permit's been issued, construction started today. All these national remodel program has been permits ready for issuance. They're getting their final contractors. That should be breaking ground here within the month. And Thornton's got their Cook County demolition permits issued this week. We will have our permits issued by the end of the week, once we get all their Cook County form and IDOT formalization. So we've got a busy late summer coming on hand, construction-wise, which is good for the city. And additionally, the River Trails condo association has hired a national firm to start doing their rebuilding and evaluating how they're gonna rebuild to get those folks that were affected by. affected by the fire last month back in, in the most quickest timeframe they can. So we've been real busy in the building department the last couple of weeks.
Good. Wendy?
Wendy Morgan Adams, City Clerk. I have no report tonight.
Joe?
No report tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Karen?
Karen Schulteis, Deputy Clerk. No report. Thank you.
Okay. And our alderman in a row here, Larry?
No report at this time.
Mr. Dulick?
And I have no report.
Mr. Lovickson?
I will have a report next meeting, in the effort to save everybody's time here, about an article that was in the Journal, video gaming related. So I'll do that at the next meeting.
We have the treasurer, Mr. Tibbets. You have a report, obviously. You're coming all the way down to the microphone.
Not exactly a report, but a request for volunteers for the AV Department. It's come to the point of time where we're pretty busy, and we could certainly use another volunteer to help shore us up in certain areas. So if anybody that lives in the city, not Chicago, in Prospect Heights, hello, anybody who lives in Prospect Heights is, seems, feels that they're qualified to help us out in the AV Department, please give us a call at the city. Our phone, our extension is 226. And also, we've got an application that's posted on the city website. If they're so inclined to download that and fill it out, turn it in.
Is it a requirement that they live in our city?
We would prefer that. I think there would be a lot of tie-in with them being familiar with what we're currently doing.
All right. Peter, why don't we post that job in the E-News, run it for four weeks, and see what you get?
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right. Chief of Police, Al Stefan.
I think he's busy. He's down there.
I know. I know he's down there. Oh, at the other place.
Oh, yeah.
He's guarding a place. All right. We got, do we expect some problems down there? All right. All right, so that basically leaves me. I have a special announcement this evening. I'm pleased to announce to the city council, elected officials gathered here this evening, along with the staff and those in tonight's audience, also to the media and those watching tonight, the proceedings on our TV channels. I will run for my third and final term in the April election for the office of Mayor of the City of Prospect Heights. While we all have enjoyed tremendous success during our tenure to date, the full job of taking care of this wonderful city has yet to be completed. Flooding and drainage, as you heard tonight, and actually nine areas that I heard about tonight, and maybe more, the sale of 10 acres of Piper Lane land, which holds a stranglehold on our budget after 20 years, the flooding of Willow and the slough and the creek, which you heard about tonight, along with the flooding and country gardens and other places throughout our city, cannot be ignored. New paving is due in several areas of the city that has yet to be completed. New sidewalks to schools have to be built, and then there is so much more yet to do. The development of all state land canceled by council was an error. That was some time ago, but I can say that now. This would have provided or produced more than $750,000 in upfront fees and approximately $350,000 in annual fees. This has to be revisited early next year. The downtown redevelopment area is already in process. During the next two weeks, I will send the council up to 10 names for consideration to be added to the committee for the downtown redevelopment. We will bring a new look and a new sales tax-producing entities to our city.
Sir, is this really a good platform for your campaign?
Also, the council has posted the Home Rule referendum request on the November 6 ballot for consideration by our citizens. Lastly, if you want to watch the life stories of Senator John McCain on TV these past two days, I am sure that you heard him speak of his reoccurring theme and goal. Do your lives work for the greater good? Ever once did he reference anyone that claimed not in my backyard verbiage. So that's my announcement. We have those people back yet? No. All right, let's move on, huh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have, this being the final meeting of the month, we have the Chicago Executive Airport Report, and tonight it's presented by Director Scott Sayward.
Scott, welcome.
Hello, Mayor, Mayor Helmer, aldermen and officials, and also the citizens of Prospect Heights. I just wanted to say that, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight to not only represent the city and the airport, but also the citizens here. Since I was here last, it was on June 11th, when you appointed me, I'm happy to say I'm getting on board, and it's been a quick and easy, pleasurable thing. The staff and fellow board members, one of which is here tonight, have been most welcoming and also accommodating. I've been at CEA for over 20 meetings and events during that period. From the recent board meetings, we wanted to give you some details of the last board meeting. First of all, the last phase of the master plan is moving along. There's 14 categories in the Phase 3 involvement that the staff is working on with CMT, the consultant group. Next week, we'll commence a kickoff meeting of the scheduling of those events, and they'll establish standards and expectations to go forward. The public involvement portion is in the process of commencing soon thereafter. One phase of the public involvement process is to complete a draft of the Stakeholder Involvement Group list, which will include officials from Prospect Heights, from the Village of Wheeling, and then others as well. So the timing of the first meeting of the SIG, the Stakeholders Investment Group, has not yet been formalized, but information on the kickoff meeting will follow as soon as it's available. Also, the location and design of the new U.S. Customs facility is progressing. Staff held a meeting with the U.S. Customs and Border Patrol officials. We're working with those people to adjust the size of the facility and to meet the needs of our operations, keeping in mind the cost and the future demands of the service. There'll be at least one more meeting before the final configuration's made. Official correspondence was also received from IDOT that runway 1230 overlay will proceed, and a participation agreement will be received soon. Also, the financial audit is going well, and they plan on having the final report for the Airport Board of Directors for approval in September. Once it's approved, it'll come to the city. Two resolutions were passed for the sale of surplus equipment and bill payment. You may notice there's some military aircraft around the area at the airport yesterday and today. There's a marine aircraft, which was a C-130, and it supports two of the CH-53 Super Stallion helicopters. The reason they're here, it's a nice place to visit, but other than that, Grumman-Northbrook, or Northrop Grumman has, they support those vehicles, those helicopters are big helicopters, so they're here to do some training and things like that for that organization. And I think they're going to depart either, I think they're supposed to depart on tomorrow. And then there's a reminder that there's a noise committee meeting on the first Wednesday in September at 6 o'clock at the airport office. And that concludes my report.
Quick question, the helicopters you mentioned in the Northbrook group?
Grumman, yeah, Northrop Grumman.
That was strictly a training mission? It wasn't come see my helicopter mission?
It was strictly training for Northrop.
And what do they train? How to fly? It's a good idea.
I think they didn't build the helicopters, from what I understand here. That group does the support and repairs and things like that on them, so they were getting some training on that.
All right. That'd be interesting.
I hope to see them tomorrow.
Good, before they leave, right? All right. Any questions for the airport group, represented by our gentleman here? Alderman Lovickson?
No questions.
Alderman Dulick?
No question, but I'm glad to hear the clarification on the military aircraft, because I saw the C-130 flying the other day, and I was a little curious. I got a kick out of seeing it, but I was curious as to what they were doing at our airport, but thank you for that clarification.
Yeah. It's a short takeoff aircraft, so it was easily, it's heavier, but it's easily to easy up and down.
Yeah. It was fun seeing it, like I said, but I'd like to know why, so I appreciate that.
All right. Alderman Rosenthal?
No questions.
Anyone else down at this end? Alderman Williamson is not here at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Joe?
We'll turn to Finance Director Ducharme for the July Treasurer's Report.
The Treasurer's Report for the first quarter of the fiscal year was included in your packet. As we've done with the previous reports, just recently, we will have this posted out on the website, so anyone who would like to view it can see it. If anybody has any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them, but everything is, seems to be progressing fairly well at this point in time.
A quick question for you. At the last meeting, there were estimates of if we bought, sold, rather, the land on Piper Lane, as to how much revenue the school district, the fire district, the library district would garner from, let's call it, the bigger builder. One building is 135,000 square feet, the other one's 25,000 square feet, and I think the point was made that the bigger building would be a better asset to benefit the school district and the fire department and so on. Did you may, come up with those numbers?
I did not, I did not receive that request to compile the information.
Okay.
First to tell you that until such time as we have construction values for the buildings that have been constructed, it would be impossible to calculate, based on the current tax rates, what the assessed valuation would be, to extend it out to calculate how much would go to each of the taxing districts.
All right. Well, you know, my thought was, these businesses, in my estimation, will not bring children. They will not, you know, I suppose they'll have fire protection, but overall, that shouldn't be a consideration. That's just my personal opinion of who to award a contract to, which we're still struggling with. So that was just a thought. I didn't know where those numbers came from, so.
Okay. Once we have the construction values, I'm sure I can run some calculations on what the extensions would be.
All right. Apparently, the Connaught Company made those, the report, their presentation contained those numbers, so I just thought you had looked at them and made, had knowledge of them.
Nope.
All right. For CFO, questions, please? Anyone? One, two, three?
Yes.
Yes.
In our report, we saw a, we're going to approve something for MFT expenditures. Is that clearing up our MFT issue?
Yes, that will clear up a bulk of the back years that are out there. We basically had to find a project that we could substitute for some of the other projects that had been adopted in the past. With the resolution being passed this evening, we should be able to bring that up to date, and hopefully, all the back issues will be cleared up.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
Just a comment. To thank you and your staff for the clarity of your reports compared to what we did yesterday.
Thanks.
All right. I think we're on to the consent agenda.
Yes, we have consideration of the consent agenda tonight. Are there any requests to remove anything from the consent agenda, or any questions?
Willow Road issue is still in conference down there.
Right. We also have, right, we also have.
But they wouldn't vote on this, not anyway, but at all. And also, it's a two-year project. There'll be a lot of questions as we go. I have no problem.
We can pull that one off. I was waiting for council if they wanted to bring it up.
Mr. Turner, your opinion?
We, it's up to the council if they want to remove something. It would just be placed at the end of the new business section, so it would still be considered by the council. Tonight, it just wouldn't be passed as part of the consent agenda.
As a consent agenda.
Correct.
So we want to remove that portion from the consent agenda at this moment in time.
It's the Willow Road. It's the resolution related to the MWRD presentation.
So it's 10F, item 10F, we'll hold on to. Any others? We can go ahead and.
Well, we're missing two council members. They're being brought back right now.
In the meantime, I have a.
Well, we have a quorum, so I'm not sure what they're doing, but.
I believe he was saying if any, if there is any other removal from Alderman Williamson.
They're on their way, so.
I do have one question.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
On item J, item J, 10J.
I don't understand the rationale of calling this committee an ad hoc committee. I'm trying to understand legal concept, distinction between an ad hoc committee. I know what ad hoc means, but why is this being called an ad hoc committee?
So the code, the city code provides for certain committees that can be formed and created by this.
That's all.
By this council. Some of the committees are enshrined in the code, and some are, any other committee is considered an ad hoc committee. So it's really how the committee is structured. And the code provides specific rules for how ad hoc committees may proceed, and in the past, like the National, like the Strategic Directions Committee is an ad hoc committee. There's other committees that are ad hoc committees. It just gives the mayor and the council a little more control over what the committee may and may not do.
So if it's not in the code, it's always an ad hoc committee?
If it's not in the code, it has to be an ad hoc committee, to be an ad hoc committee. If the council wishes to not have it be an ad hoc committee, which would open up the possibilities for that committee to have additional authority in terms of spending money, possibly, we would have to form it in a different manner. And that can be done, it would just be a different form of committee.
Okay.
All right. Are we straight on that? So we're holding off on the consent agenda, the Willow Road, Slough, and Lake situation till new business. Is that right?
Yes. The motion would be to approve consent agenda with the exception of item 10F, which will be placed in new business.
We have a motion to that effect, please?
So moved.
Second, please. Got here a second?
Second, yeah.
Yes, I did. Thank you. No further discussion? Do we need a roll call on this? Roll call, please.
Sure. Alderman Williamson?
Aye.
Alderman Lovickson?
Aye.
Alderman Rosenthal?
Aye.
Alderman Dulick?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0. Do we want to go back to this?
Resident comments, sure.
Or is this new?
We could go back to that. Sure. We have people here that.
Well, okay. We only have the lake and the slough issues.
Yeah.
But we just said we do it at the new business.
Right.
Situation. Is that correct?
That's correct, at the end of new business.
All right. Let's move on then. Where are we, Joe?
We have new business.
We have executives.
Oh, yes.
All right. Before, well, I don't want to have people waiting either.
Sure.
So let's go back and visit the three questions I have regarding, apparently, the Let's go back and visit the three questions I have regarding apparently the slew and the lake. Arlene Menke, please. 404 Owen Court. Would you step to the microphone, please? Oh, I know, but we record us and you're on TV, so we want you to have your best look up here. Thank you. So again, you're Arlene Menke, you're at 404 Owen Court, Hillcrest Lake, Prospect Heights.
I've lived in Prospect Heights 51 years now, and I'm on Owen Court, which has flooded, I think, since the day we moved in. When we first, actually, when we first moved in, it was just a sea of mud, the, the lake there. And since then, every year, we do flood a little bit. But I am very scared about what I hear is going on with, with Willow Road being so high. We always have water, no matter what. It just comes in one little patch where our road is a little bit low. The water comes in, and since we've lived there, they've built two homes on the end of the court, which were supposed to be flood areas. There were big prairies on both sides, and the water would come in and fill in those areas. So that is another reason why there's more flooding that goes on in that area, because they've built homes on these flood plains. But we've, we've learned to deal with all of that. I'm not, I'm not really excited about seeing this project going through because I've lived there 51 years and I've dealt with it for 51 years. If it really is so serious that you have to spend all this money, well, then you're going to have to go ahead and do it, and I'll just have to deal with it. But I was hoping that there would be some way that you could do it that's less expensive. I thought that, that dredging would be the case, but tonight I heard that that's not going to happen and it won't do any good. So I guess that's out. But I just hope that you won't, won't do it so that we're going to flood more, because the water does come down through the houses. It, it comes down to Wheeling Road from the lake. In the back of our house, we've had fish flopping and turtles out there and everything else. And, and to tell you the truth, you get used to it. This is Prospect Heights. That's why we moved here. We love the, we love the trees. We love the lake. We love looking at the lake. And I just hope that it won't go away. And I hope that you understand how I feel about it.
Well, thank you.
All I had to say.
Thank you for speaking and thank you for being here tonight. Sandy Syak, please.
My name is Sandy Syak. I live at 412 Hillcrest Drive. And I'm one of the five houses that we would be impacted probably, I don't want to say most, but we're closest to the lake. And from what I understand, maybe you did this while we were in the other room, that did you guys approve the fact that this is going to go through?
No, we're holding it to the end of the, before new business, or is that right?
Okay. Well, I guess my question was.
The consent agenda, we removed that issue.
It was removed from consent and it will be placed at the end of new business.
Tonight.
Okay. I guess all, all that I ask is that, because I know that it, you guys proposed this a long time ago and we haven't heard anything, and I just want to trust that we can have some citizen input. You can tell many of us that went in the other room, because we have concerns. Some people have some good ideas. And of course, depending on where we live, we all have different concerns for it. So I'm just really hoping that we can have a meeting, perhaps, you know, with our aldermen and maybe Cedric or someone involved directly in the project to answer specific questions, because I, for one, have questions about the road closures, how that's going to impact my street. I want to understand the temporary road that will be put in on Hillcrest Drive, which will probably impact half of my front yard and possibly lose two of the biggest pine trees that are probably in Prospect Heights. I'd like to know if it's going to be, this temporary road is going to be accessible to people to come off of Wheeling Road to cut through, because many people do that now anyway, which is fine. But I think if it's, there's a temporary road, that's going to be kind of a problem for us, because I'll, I'll basically have a two-way street in my front yard. I had questions about the driveway, the driveways, because I was told a couple of years ago that in front of my house, which is the lowest, that the street's going to be raised two feet. Well, you know, that, then if you're going to grade that up, that's half of my driveway. So I have questions about the driveway. And then I, I have concerns about the length of the project. And I, I know you, you can't tell exactly, but just to realize the impact on the residents is going to be, I'm, I'm thinking already now for, I'll bet it'll be a year and a half. And, and that's just a big, a big impact to all of us and not just the five of us that are the most impacted there on, on Hillcrest Drive. Many of the houses at the beginning are up higher. And not that they're not going to have their issues either, but I just hope that we can just be well-informed, because I think well-informed residents, we will be more, we can understand more that you are accepting our input and want us to understand it, that's all. And when you don't understand something, it makes it a little bit scary. And I, Arlene articulated well. I mean, I'm scared about it. I'm very scared about it and how it's going to turn out. And then I also understand too well, I'm at it, that, you know, once all of the project, the road project is done, that there's considerations for a lot of recreation to be done in the area and park benches and lights and people being able to park on Hillcrest Drive in front of my house. I can tell you that none of us want that. So I'll just go on record with that and thank you for listening. And I think I've said all that I'd like to in my five minutes is probably all.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tim Kupchak, please. All right. Okay. We want to, what's your next?
Executive session.
All right, then we want, I want to make a motion.
Yeah. So we have, we've moved executive session up to this time of the evening. I have a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of setting a price for the sale of property owned by the city. The mayor's also requested that IG Trucking be present in executive session.
Mr. Mayor?
Motion.
I, before I make a motion, I have to express my concern, and I believe other aldermen have the same concern, that we would like to meet in executive session as elected officials and, and staff that are usually present in executive session without outsider attendance, at least initially, the initial part of the meeting. And I speak for myself, my colleague aldermen, if they feel the same way, can speak for themselves.
Well, let's have a motion. Let's have a second. Any more discussion and we vote.
Okay, I, I so moved then.
Well, okay. A second then discussion?
Well, the motion is on what my just requesting.
Are you moving to go to executive session with the presence of IG Trucking? Are you moving to adjourn to executive session? With that, with the, with just elected officials and.
With just elected officials and staff.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, and then discussion. And then discussion? Any further discussion?
I would just add that I concur with Alderman.
Well, you're already voted, so thank you.
Alderman Rosenthal.
You did a good job. What, am I still allowed to speak?
I, I just wanted to clarify that I think it could imply some kind of impropriety if we're meeting with just one party and not the other. So I don't want to give that appearance. And so that, I just wanted to explain, that's my reason for wanting to move into executive session, just as the council.
Okay, thank you, but we did meet with the other party in executive session also.
We've met with both in the past, but they've both given their presentation.
Thank you. You voted against it. What else do we need to do?
If I could say my piece, please. I believe that we've heard from both parties and there's just no reason to bring any of those parties back in to executive session. There's nothing that's going to.
Well, I, I did write an email to all of you. None of you responded. The email was specific. I wanted them to come in the executive session, because they had 14 points on the contract. 13, 14, five or six were fine with our attorneys. Would you kindly wait a, wait a moment, please? Were fine with our attorneys, and I would have liked to just settle those questions in executive session as quickly as possible. If that's not what you read, that's certainly what I meant. Yes, sir?
With all due respect, Mayor, I know I specifically answered your email that I had a problem with that, and I believe I saw copies from two other aldermen whose emails said the same thing.
Myself.
All right, well, I mean, voting's already enough.
Well, we need to take, we have a motion, we have a second.
We need to take the vote. Roll call, please.
Alderman Ludwixson?
Aye.
Alderman Dulick?
Aye.
Alderman Rosenthal?
Aye.
Alderman Williamson?
Aye.
Motion fails.
No, passes.
Passes to not have.
Correct.
The IG company in executive session.
Correct.
What are we going to do in executive session that people would have to wait to see if we have any action items?
Well, we do have a, under new business, 14A, we have the consideration of a resolution authorizing the sale of the city property located at 25 and 35 Piper Lane. So there is, there's potential for action on that item after executive session. In addition, there's, because the, because the Willow Road MWRD resolution was moved off of consent to give the citizens time to comment before the city voted, that's also going to be considered at the end of new business.
Why can't we move that right back right now? I don't need, people don't want to sit here and wait for their issue to come out.
Okay.
If we can solve it right away.
So we can, we can consider that item and then we have, we will adjourn to executive session?
Right. So let's reconsider the item first.
All right. So Joe, do you want to read 10F?
Sure. That would be, we're going to revisit item 10F, Resolution Authorizing Participation in Flood Control Project on Willow Road with the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District and Cook County Department of Transportation.
Motion.
Motion to do that. If anybody's listening, you want to read it again? Seriously, you want to?
I'm sorry, could you read it again?
All right, let's go.
Resolution Authorizing Participation in Flood Control Project on Willow Road with the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District and Cook County Department of Transportation.
Motion to approve, please.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. We've discussed the item. Now let's take a roll call.
Alderman Williamson?
Aye.
Alderman Rosenthal?
Aye.
Alderman Ludwixson?
Aye.
Alderman Dulick?
Aye.
All right, motion passes four zero. Council meeting at 8:35. Concerning Council members, eight years of Elvis Road, on the 27th of August. Roll call, please.
Alderman Williamson?
Here.
Alderman Ludwixson?
Here.
Alderman Rosenthal?
Here.
Alderman Dulick?
Here.
We have a formal presence. Who else is here tonight?
Michael Ducharme, Director of Finance.
Mark Roscoe, Director of Public Works.
Peter Falcone, Assistant City Administrator.
Dan Peterson, Director of Building and Development.
Wendy Morgan Adams, City Clerk.
City Administrator Joseph, our.
Kevin Carrance, City Attorney.
Karen Schultz, Deputy Clerk.
Al Stuckman, Chief of Police.
All right, so we're all here.
No, what about Rich?
Oh, Rich. There he is again. All right, we have several open items that need to be brought to the attention of the council. What are they, Joe?
Well, if we go to 14, new business, we have, and this had been tabled earlier, the Resolution Authorizing the Sale of City Property, 25 and 35 Piper Lane, at Connor Commercial Real Estate LLC for $2,730,000.
Like to make a motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? There is a motion to approve, in which case I will also vote on this issue. Let's start the roll call, please.
Alderman Williamson?
Aye.
Alderman Rosenthal?
I vote aye, and I believe it is, I, I vote aye because it is in the best interest of the city and the community at large for having this transaction in place.
Alderman Dulick?
Aye.
Alderman Ludwixson?
I vote aye for the same reasons that Alderman Rosenthal stated.
And Mayor Hamer?
I vote no. This is probably the least attractive of the two deals, based on money, based on usage, based on size of the building, and based on the fact that it will create much more noise for the people that live at Quincy Park. And we're in a contract that can be stalled out, not necessarily by Connor, but by, by the state on an NFR letter, because the building is going right on top of the land that is encumbered by EPA problems. The other contract was a much small, smaller building, much less trucking and noise, closing their business at 6 o'clock every night and only working on Saturdays till 1 o'clock. Joe and I and Dan Peterson had a chance to visit with the owner, the principal, today, and they run a nice operation. And I think they, it would have been a better choice. And there's other reasons too, but primarily the idea that our friends, relations in, at the fire department, at the school district, at the library, et cetera, might gain more tax revenue, as was discussed at the last meeting, in the future. These people are bringing no children to the front. Fire department probably has an interest in making sure they can protect their building. Their building, the IG building, would have been built on a far northeast corner of the land that we have, meaning that they wouldn't be anywhere near most of Quincy Park. It'd be farthest away. It's a small building. The other building is 135,000 square feet. It's 40, almost 40 feet tall, very visible from everywhere on the land and being built right on top of the EPA, EPA problem. They were also paying $1 million more and $500,000 upfront. Today, they agreed to pay the whole $1 million upfront if that's what it took to get their location. They run a clean operation. There are people that are serious people that would have liked to have been in the city of Prospect Heights and be good neighbors to all their surroundings. They were going to build a BUR. I don't see that in the Connor contract. They were going to build a tenuous sound attenuation. I don't see that in the contract that you're approving tonight. And lastly, but very emphatically, I, I will not vote for this issue. Counselor?
So, just to be clear, is that a no, or you're not, she's choosing not to vote on this issue?
I will not vote to approve the issue under AR 18-14, sale of the building to Connor. We don't even know what Connor's going to do with that building. They're not going to keep it. They're going to sell it. And then what do we have? We have an issue.
So Mayor, you brought up, you brought up the, about the, about Quincy Park being right there. You are aware that, and I received multiple phone calls from people asking us to accept the Connor agreement over the IG agreement. Are you aware of that?
No, I'm not, because no one talks to me on this council. I don't get any phone calls.
I think we had somebody at our last meeting, our last meeting, who came here.
I got three phone calls, by the way.
Who said that same thing.
Two of them were against the, any automobile type, truck type development. The other one simply said, you know, I don't think we should have trucks there, but can't you get rid of the airplane noises that are coming from Opelone Airport? So that's the calls I got. I had no reports from you, Alderman Ludwixson, no reports from any other aldermen that people were against this. And just earlier, let me finish this. Just earlier, I said, even a person like John, or, you know, our senator that passed away, said that you've got to do things for the greater good. You can't take, not in my backyard attitudes and forward them. You are going to, we are going to, and tonight I announced for a new term, and I presume I'm going to win. That's why I announced it. But on the other hand, we're going to have to deal with this. There will be much more noise. They have a 24-hour
They have a twenty-four hour operation, what I remember, whereas these other people do not. They're not there after six PM. Not only that, I believe there was parking for two hundred fifty cars. Can you imagine the traffic going out to Wolf Road when people come to work or leave work? Have you thought of any of these things?
I don't know if you realize this is what's...
Are you guys talking, or you...
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, I mean, this can't, did IG propose bringing in a monastery or something? 'Cause I, that's not, I heard there were gonna be a hundred and seventy-five trucks. So I mean, I don't know what you're talking about.
Trucks, they do not repair, they don't do air conditioning.
But they move there and park there and don't move from that location?
That's it, yes.
That's kind of an odd business model.
Well, it's too bad, because you were all invited to go meet the principal and see.
Mr. Mayor, you spent the better part of a year...
You weren't talking.
Yeah, I know, 'cause you've been talking for fifteen minutes.
No, I haven't.
You spent the better part of a year trying to convince me to accept the Connor deal. Go back, if, if, if they wanna read minutes, if they, if there's executive session minutes that are open, you've spent the better part of a year trying to convince me to go with that.
That's all we had.
Now, on something you tell me you got last night, you're telling us we should change our vote on something we haven't, that we have no copy of and haven't seen, that the whole idea of this thing is so shady, it isn't even funny. You would ask us to vote on, to not vote on this, to go with that, and you're just getting this information last night?
Well, you know, these people came in after Connor.
I've always said we shouldn't sell the property, I think we should hold on to it.
You changed your mind, isn't that amazing?
You changed my mind, you changed my mind, Mr. Mayor, you told me how great this project was.
Right, uh, the issue really is that this is a bad situation that you possibly, if you're re-elected, have to live with. And that's not right for the people that live there, that's who I'm concerned about. Uh, I, I just don't, uh, think that, uh, no truck repair, uh, from the standpoint of, uh, refrigeration units, they don't repair refrigeration units, for example, STIRI, of course, does. So we know what, uh, uh, you know, it can be, what noises can, uh, we can look forward to. Not only that, Alderman, you reported at least a year ago that STIRI trucking, to get another aside, another picture of this, isn't even allowed to have trucking on that land.
Correct, correct.
What have we done about it? Nothing.
I've asked you to do something about it.
I'm gonna do it.
Well, you're gonna remove the trucks?
You're talking off the, uh, wrong tree here. You have a city administrator, you have a planning and zoning, why wouldn't there have been a tax amendment? Why wouldn't there have been a B four, uh, you know, uh, correct zoning? Why did that happen? You were on board.
I have no idea what you're talking about, I've asked for those trucks to be removed. Uh, when that, when STIRI first came here, you told us it was only gonna be refrigeration truck repair, blossom into a hundred truck storage location. I, I have no idea what you're talking about, you're not making any sense to me right now.
Alright, let's make some sense. Did you not tell us a year ago that there is no, uh, zoning that they have to operate trucking operations?
We, we said that if, if IG came in, we'd have to give them a special use to park trucks there. That is zoned the same as the other one.
Alright, but special use should have gone to STIRI also, and, uh, didn't. And a tax amendment should have gone there also, and it hasn't. Uh, the new company's fault.
Unfortunately, you, you painfully tell me every meeting, I don't set the agenda. Only you can put these things on the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
I don't do the agenda, thank you.
You don't?
You've, you've said this so many times, and, uh, I think Joe could, uh, test that.
You don't do the agenda, who does?
Pardon?
You don't do the agenda?
I don't.
You don't?
I review what Joe writes down, yes.
So you've never added anything to an agenda or taken anything?
Sometimes.
Okay, so you've had a year that had all this stuff?
I don't do the agenda, and I haven't done the agenda for years. So I don't know who you're, you know, talking to, because you sure won't come talk to me. You haven't for eight years, wow.
Now I see why.
Well, you don't care to talk to me.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, I received, to the best of my recollection, and I checked my computer today just to make sure, ten different phone calls and a dozen emails from that area, and all uniformly saying, "Don't put the trucks in."
I received the same emails and the same phone calls, I'm assuming, Matt, you received those and more, and they were sent out to everybody, so when you say you've only heard from three people, Mr. Mayor, I believe you didn't check your email and you didn't listen to your voicemail, because they reached out to everybody.
Thank you, I, I read all my emails.
If I could just make one last comment?
But, well, let me just add to this issue. You heard it from twenty, twenty-five, probably the same people. There are twelve hundred people living there, why aren't they all here tonight?
You know, well-known, Mr. Mayor, with, in marketing activities, when you get a call from one, there are ten other people, the marketeers and the salespeople will tell you there are ten other people who've chosen not to call, not because they opposed to it.
All I'm saying is, I think this is a wrong decision for many reasons, not just one, not just for my feelings, not just for the money, there are wrong people to occupy. We have a better choice, which we didn't have up front, we didn't have that choice up front. And, uh, the, the shame of it really is that none of you went to see the principal, shake his hand and say, "Hey, what are you planning over at, uh, you know, over in Prospect Heights?"
I went to see his property in Addison.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, could I?
You drove, right, you drove around the front of the place and left.
You are entirely wrong, let me answer how I, I went there. I went there, I drove around the front, I drove onto the lot, I stayed on the lot for a while while they were doing their activity, there was, there was a significant amount of noise, and this was actually, uh, during the early afternoon, uh, there, and the noise was coming from repairs that they were making. What repairs they were making, I don't know, but there was enough noise that would have definitely carried a, a long distance. That is an area that is not residential. I tried to drive around there, and it took me about a mile or so driving from there to find the first residence. So, please don't, uh, tell me what I did do and what I didn't do, I know what I did.
If I could add one last comment, please?
Yes, sir.
Um, first of all, I do feel, strongly feel that this is a better match for that, uh, area. But just to add, um, I did meet with members from IG Trucking on site at, um, the property that's...
At our site.
At, at our site, I gave them a tour of the north side of Quincy Park, so that they understood the full, uh, situation. They invited me to, uh, ride with them to tour, personally tour their facility in Addison, I believe it is. I discussed that with, uh, Joe Wade, and that seemed to be inappropriate, so I, I went to their facility on my own, I did not get their port, personal tour, but I experienced the same thing, I did go to the facility. So I feel like I did do my homework, I looked at all sides of this. Uh, I received numerous phone calls and emails from my residents. The ones that I spoke to, which were many of them, they said that they contacted all of the Aldermen and you. It doesn't make any sense to say how many emails or phone calls you made, I don't know. But many of them said that they went down the line with all of the Aldermen and the mayor. So I'm going on representing, uh, the members and the, the residents from Ward Five. I also look at what's best for the city overall, but there are a lot of factors involved in that, not just the dollar sign at the end, and I feel that I made the right decision in my vote, and I'm very comfortable with that. But I did do my homework, and I tried to make the best decision, and I'm comfortable with the decision that I made.
So in two hundred days, which is on the contract, no FAR comes, uh, letter comes out, what's gonna be your next step? Do you give them another extension for six months? You've given them an extension for six months, this is not two weeks.
I'm comfortable with my decision there.
Okay.
Mayor, if I could make my comments for the record, please?
I'm sorry, you're not on the air, but you can step up after we're done, if you like. We'll invite comments, but go ahead, yes, sir?
To expand on, uh, what Alderman Dolick has said, um, I too visited the site, took a look at it. It wasn't quite what I was expecting or what I was used to, um, and I have worked with several of these in the past. However, the five of the six decision-makers have been in discussions about this, talking about both IG and Connor for the better part of a month now. And the five of us have really come to a consensus that we felt the Connor McShane deal was a better, cleaner deal. Uh, it wasn't just a selling price, three point seven five million versus two point seven five million. We also took into consideration what, you know, what is a, excuse me, better use for the community? What would help enhance the area? What are the liabilities associated with the use? And what are the long-term benefits associated with each one? When you're talking about Connor McShane, yeah, their, their purchase price is two point seven five million, but over the course of time, that two point seven five million actually equates to be more down the road in monies to the community than the IG trucking deal. Okay, and it's based on them developing four hundred and forty, or four hundred and forty-four thousand plus square foot of property, which is gonna bring in, based on their estimates, two hundred thousand plus in annual tax revenue versus twenty-five percent of that from a much smaller building and an underdeveloped piece of property. So over the course of five years, based on the deal that was in place, they're both gonna be on equal footing at three point five million, okay? Based on the next five years, McShane will outpace the contribution to the community by a hundred thousand dollars a year. So after twenty years, we're actually two hundred, uh, two, uh, two million dollars ahead versus the IG trucking deal. So I don't know that there's really a question of what's better for the community. So with that, you know, I've made my decision and we'll move forward.
Decision is obvious, it's already been taken. How long have you been in real estate?
How long have you been in this branch of real estate?
Fifty-four years.
I'm pretty sure you have been doing trucking and industrial buildings.
We have those too, yes, we have a whole industrial division.
Your company does, not Nick's.
My company does, right. I'm very familiar with that, and, uh, I'm not in your business, you're a graduate engineer, I think I remember that, is that correct?
Okay, and the point is?
You are a graduate engineer.
Point is?
From Michigan.
Point is?
Right, I would come to you if I were looking for a graduate, for engineering type, uh, advice. You've never come to me, I've been here eight years.
In fact, I, I did come to you, and to echo the sentiments of Alderman Ludwixson, you spent a year pushing the Connor deal.
It's all we had.
My, my dream for this parcel, obviously, you know, and I've said it many, many times over eight years, is that I thought it should be a community campus, it should be the village hall, it should be the police station, it should be the fire department, uh, and public works. But nobody bought into that idea, and I'm fine, you know, you win some, you lose some. But you know what, I look at this, and I look at a deal where they're gonna touch four hundred and forty-four thousand square feet, they're gonna put new building, they're gonna put new landscaping, it's gonna have a whole new vantage point, a new, a new viewpoint from Palatine Road, and it could be a catalyst for further development, further, further positive development versus more trucking. Okay, if you drive down Palatine Road and you're looking at truck parking, boy, that makes you wanna build there. It, it doesn't. And for you to say that Connor is gonna have a twenty-four hour operation, well, that's just a false statement. They don't have any operation at this point, so how can you say that? Now I ask you the question, how can you say that?
Well, what do you think they're gonna do, run a vacant building?
Okay, what makes you think it's gonna be a twenty-four hour operation?
They stated that when they were here.
They never stated that.
That's what I remember.
They never even told you who was gonna be in there, because they don't know yet.
And that's, that worries me a lot.
You made, you made a whole slew of false statements to help support your argument, and, you know, why you were trying to upset a potential buyer i- is beyond me. But on behalf of the council, I'd like to say that you do have our full support, so...
You are, you are a graduate engineer, aren't you?
Yes, what is your point?
Well, you don't say yes. My point is, I'm having a hard time.
Nick, where are you going with this? I mean, where, how is this relevant to the argument?
Well, I wanna know if I can come to you, I would only go to a graduate engineer.
Nick, I wouldn't work with you on any other level if you paid me to, so, thank you very much.
Takes pressure off me, thank you. Uh, we had a vote, uh, we, uh, it was, uh, five, uh, four to, four to one, and what is the next step?
Uh, that takes care of that item, so we're on to twelve B, or fourteen B, I'm sorry, Mayor. Joe, do you wanna?
Uh, because of the, the not having the last meeting, we have a few requests for waivers of first reading, beginning with, uh, the ordinance approving a special use permit for a daycare center at eleven South Wolf Road. Uh, this received a unanimous, um, approval from a recommendation of the Plan Commission Zoning Board, and it provides for a daycare center at that, uh, that small shopping mall. Versus the, uh, request for waivers, they'd like to get moving as soon as possible.
The owner of the, um, daycare center was here earlier but had to leave, um, so, um, it, it is a current business owner that does have the dance studio, the Creedance Studio, at the shopping center. They are changing their business model and going to be moving into the daycare center. They have, uh, met with DCFS and purported, uh, all their findings, and met with a positive recommendation from, uh, the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals, and that's why we're here this evening.
Just a quick question, was that asked before, or should we vote? Since that, uh, just a quick question, we had something similar coming that had IDPH requirements before that was on that same street, but they came to us with their IDPH approvals. Does this have to have approvals, or should it have approvals before we grant, uh, a special use for something that they don't necessarily have yet?
No, that will be issued at the time of certificate of occupancy, before opening, when the s- uh, facility is remodeled and set for opening. They will have that before, in place before we issue our occupancy permit.
Is it IDPH or something?
Uh, it's through the, uh, Illinois Department of Public Health, uh, daycare center operations.
It's a facility check, it's a little bit different, ours is a land use regulation, and theirs is really the, the, the capacity to operate.
Okay.
Can we get a motion to waive first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Ludwixson.
Aye.
Alderman Rosenthal.
Aye.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero, the, uh, approval of the, uh, final approval for this, uh, situation, a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, no further discussion, roll call, please.
Alderman Rosenthal.
Aye.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Alderman, uh, Ludwixson.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
Uh, next item is D, this is ordinance establishing prevailing wage rate for the city of Prospect Heights is designated by state of Illinois, this is a Department of Labor requirement, we do this annually. Uh, if the council would like to, uh, reduce the load for the next, uh, uh, meeting, we could entertain a waiver of first reading.
So moved.
Second.
And this is the waiver of first reading?
Yeah.
Thank you, okay.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? If not, uh, let's, uh, do that, take a roll call.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Alderman Ludwixson.
Aye.
Alderman Rosenthal.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero, uh, motion to approve.
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Any other discussion, if not, roll call, please.
Alderman Ludwixson.
Aye.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Alderman Rosenthal.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
Item E is a request for waiver of first reading of this ordinance, this is an ordinance granting text amendments to Title Nine signs. As you will recall, this is the item that came before the Plan Commission Zoning Board related to the McDonald's, um, reconfiguration, it addresses the, the, uh, menu boards.
Any questions on that, if not, can we have a motion to, uh, uh...
Waive the first reading?
To what?
Yes.
Waive the first reading.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion to waive first reading, we have a second, uh, roll call, please.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Alderman Rosenthal.
Aye.
Alderman Ludwixson.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero, uh, final, uh, vote to grant the text amendment for the signs regarding McDonald's. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Rosenthal.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson. Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Alderman Ludwicksen.
Aye.
Which brings us to G. This is also a request for waiver of first reading as their closure is coming up. This is ordinance for special use at 708 North Elmhurst Road, Greenbrier Assisted Living. And this begins with the first reading. As you're aware, that there's a change in ownership and that triggers a special use. One item that is changing is that the Plan Commission is proposing that the special use now run with with the land and not the ownership.
Motion to approve the waiving of the first reading, please.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second.
A question, Mr.?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
The, I talked to you a little bit about this, Dan, but are there any other instances where we have the granting to the land of a special use? And do we, do we keep track of that, is something, is there something done with the title to the property? Or how is that known going on 50 years, 20 years ago?
Special uses and variances typically are recorded with the recorder's office and are documented in that way. Additionally, when we get applications, we look back at the files and prior ordinances for that address to make sure that, we check to make sure that they're being met and what their approvals were previously, to make sure that we're consistent with them going forward. And special uses can come in both fashions, both with the land and/or with the particular applicant or use at a specific site. So with this one, the applicant made that proposal. And part of that is attorney Larry Friedman's here representing Greenbrier this evening, additionally, and he put some rationale as to why this one should stay with the property versus the applicant, the land. And if Kevin has anything else you'd like to add?
Yeah, thank you, Dan. The, generally, they don't run with the land, although there's exceptions to that. The reason is that just removes a, a city oversight from the property, should there be a change. It's, it would, the city would be relinquishing that, that level of control over the, over the site.
So why would the city do that? I mean, it's a pretty simple process, I mean, they got caught up in a summer schedule of meetings and zoning board meeting issues, and that's why it took so long. I still don't even really think it took that long to do. Why would the city do that?
Is Mr. Friedman here? Okay, so I'll let him explain the rationale rather than put words in his mouth.
I think most, and I defer to your city attorney, I think most special uses do run with the land, not necessarily in Prospect Heights. That's generally my experience, and I appear in a lot of communities. And I think if you're going to have some run with the land, and you're going to have some run with the operator, and you're looking for a distinction, this is more than any kind, the kind that should run with the land, because this is already a regulated operation, as I indicated in my email to Dan, which I think is in your, in your staff report. It's not just the relative inconvenience of going through the process, because, you know, the process is the process. It does impede financing. It's a problem. When, when someone goes to put a loan on the property, and that's what we're facing here, and that's why we made this request, the lender says, well, wait a minute. If I, if, we don't expect you to default here, Mister, Mister Operator, but if you do, and I have to come in and we have to foreclose and become the owner, we've got a property that technically we're not even approved to take over or sell to somebody. Now, that may be a theoretical argument, but to a lender, it's not. And what I'm suggesting to you, and I think it was settled early in a different context tonight, the land use you control, the special use you control, all the conditions that you put on there about whatever they may be, hours of operation on a particular business, or landscaping, or restrictions on where you can park, those bind whomever owns and operates the property, regardless of who the owner is. So the real question you're talking about from the standpoint of operation is, well, how do I know they're qualified? How do I know they're going to run this business in a qualified fashion? And what I'm suggesting is, in this particular case, because it's this kind of business, the state of Illinois vets them completely. So they have to go through that licensing process, whoever they are, and you're not giving anything up that's not already covered by another governmental agency, and you're controlling the operation.
I guess my concern isn't if it's an orderly sequence of new owners or new operators. That, that, that's not my concern. My concern is, let's say there's some disconnection in the future, or it's not a senior living center anymore. And
It has to be.
No, it doesn't have to be.
Under your special use, it does have to be.
Well, I mean, somebody could come in here and change the use. But with that, that property is permanently deeded, the ability to be a
Alderman, if you record the special use ordinance, and that's what council's suggesting you will do, no one will come in and change the use, because they won't be able
How does that benefit us?
Well, because if you're going to change the use, you have to come back before you can go through the process. I mean, you ask your council, you'd have to do that. The use can't change, that's the purpose of the special use.
No, I understand.
I mean, particularly, you know, in this zoning district, this is an R1, I believe, district, am I correct? It's a residential district.
Yes.
There's no other business that could operate there, it would have to either be this or it would have to be a residence. So if there were a use to change, you would be, A, you'd be immediately aware of it, and B, nobody would buy it from an investment standpoint to operate a, you know, a movie theater, because they would realize it's not zoned for that. So I, I don't see, I don't see that you're really losing anything, I think you have the protections. And I'm strongly suggesting that the, the burden that's put on the owner is not just whether or not there's an inconvenience to go before your board, that's not. We go before your boards, as we are tonight. The problem is, it really impedes our ability to sell the property. It does create a problem, it makes it less marketable. So it has a real economic impact, and I'm suggesting, I don't think the city needs that protection, I think they already have it.
Does, does them coming in to ask for a change to the PUD required on the special use be asked for again? The special use is there no matter what. If you come in and say, we want to turn this into condo unit special.
That's a, that's a new PUD, in my opinion, in the special use.
It would be a modification of an existing PUD, but the special use is running with the property.
No, it would either be a new one or a modification, but
But the PUD and special use aren't connected.
They are, they are.
How are they?
Especially, a planned unit development is a special use.
But you're special?
I don't know if your ordinance is a special use if it is.
Is it a planned unit development, or is it the senior living?
I believe it's a senior living, but let me, let me take a look at the ordinance real quick.
If this use changed, we would have to go through your process to go both before planning and before this council for approval, or we could not change the use. I mean, I, there's no, I'm not equivocating on that at all, that is the fact.
Right, no, I'm just, you know, it's just, I get it, you, you want it to be smoother if there's future transit, future sales, but everybody would like that.
Well, I, I have to tell you that
Nobody here, nobody's telling us that we should change our requirement to always have special uses go with the property. It would make life easier for, why don't we do that? There's got to be a reason.
I, I can't prove this, but I was involved when this was approved. I, I think frankly, the inclusion of that provision was not intended, I really don't, I think it was an error.
If we have another special use today, you know, it's, this is the first time I'm catching this, is that special uses go with the applicant, not the property.
Well, most, again, and I've been doing this for decades, in, in, I would say 90% of the special uses I encounter, no matter what the community, run with the land and don't go with the applicant, because many municipalities feel they're better protected if they run with the land. Because it, it, it's recorded, and it's against the title, just like a mortgage would be, everybody sees it.
Okay.
It's the original ordinance, which is being amended. It's a special use is hereby granted for an assisted living facility, otherwise known as a development. And there are, there are plats and other forms connected to the ordinance. So it, it's not just a simple special use for a specific use.
So it's a PUD?
It's a PUD.
Yeah.
All right, anyone else? For being none, let's have a motion to approve the second reading for 708 North Elmhurst Road.
I think we have to vote on the waiver of the first reading there.
Yeah, we're still
We're still on the first.
I don't have that.
So we're having
14G.
Okay.
So we took, we have a motion in a second, so we just
So we need a waiver of the first reading for 708 North Elmhurst Road, Greenbrier Assisted Living.
So moved.
We have a motion to waive the first reading, we have a second, please.
Second.
There being no further discussion, we'll have a roll call.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderman Rosenthal.
Aye.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Alderman Ludwicksen.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. We have the second reading of the issue regarding 708 North Elmhurst Road. Motion, please.
So moved.
We have a second. Got a motion, we have a second, roll call, please.
Alderman Rosenthal.
Aye.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Alderman Ludwicksen.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero, Joe?
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Item 14I, this is a requested waiver of the first reading of the refunding ordinance for the Lake Clare Water Bonds. As discussed recently with council, these have become eligible for refinancing. And it has been identified that there, there will likely be some savings of approximately $100,000 to be spread over those bond payers.
I think the savings, the last I looked, were $169,000.
Oh, very good, it's gone up? Excellent. And the, the underwriter of Bernardi Securities would like to get this before the expected September refinancing rush, so they're asking for a waiver of first reading tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please, for waiver of the first reading.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Will Alderman Ludwicksen.
Aye.
Alderman Rosenthal.
Aye.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero, move on to the second reading.
And Jay is the reading of this, and if, if you have any questions, Mr. Dan Forbes of Spear Financial, the financial advisor for this issue, there's a team of attorneys and underwriters and assorted experts in this field. But this is a requested adoption of the ordinance providing for this refinancing.
Joe, can I add one point?
Yeah.
There was a change to the ordinance at the last minute this afternoon. A copy of that ordinance was placed in front of you this evening. There was one small change in section three related to an amount. If there is a question about the amount that changed, Dan would be the one to answer that question for you.
All right, what is the amount, and how was the change?
Market actually has been moving in our favor, and the amount change was a maximum principal amount that you could have retired in the refunding bonds. As rates go down, the principal corresponding principal amounts in maturities could change, and one of the maturities was at $215,000. If rates continue to go down, that might go up to 220. I suggested to put in the ordinance 230 in case we hit the home run and rates plummet, but that could be other problems, so. And the underwriters asked for the waiver of first reading, I think that's appropriate. They're telling you that you, even though underwriters always talk about trying to get things done immediately, so. Savings are good, the market looks good. You're to answer any questions.
All right, any other questions?
Yeah, quick question.
Yes, sir.
This doesn't lengthen, this is, there's 10 years remaining, that's all that was left anyway?
Staying in the footprint, we're, we're saving equal amounts in every year, at least that's the plan. Right now, we've got like 20,000 nominal savings.
So this will just reduce the amount for each taxpayer on their tax bill?
It is, up until 2028 over time, so.
Because we levy less for each year then?
Yes.
Not levying as much. Why, why does this rate seem higher than what the initial rates were? Is that possible? I thought we were under 5%.
Yes, those rates are higher, your memory is very good. Those are not to exceed rates. The limit, the real limit to make sure that you're not paying a bunch of, what was it, experts? I don't know how Joe described me, I was complimented. Sundry experts. So they're not just making money on the deal. There is a limitation in there that they have to save at least 5% of the refunding bonds. Right now, we're at like 9% of the refunded bond principal. So you have a limitation such that, you know, we have to come back to you for another ordinance if for whatever reason the market
Oh, so those aren't the rates of, or expected rates of the bond, is that the, that's the savings?
Yeah, not to exceed, the real savings rate, the real rate in here that is the limitation on the refunding is to make sure that they save at least 5%. You don't want to pay the professionals more than people are going to save on, you know, the residents are going to save.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, we have a second reading to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussions, if not, roll call, please.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderman Rosenthal.
Aye.
Alderman Ludwicksen.
Aye.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero, we have a report on the warrants, please.
Warrants? Okay, so expenses for this period of $249,418.47. August 17, 2018 payroll posting of $140,523.91. July Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund of $17,365.26. We've pension payment $68,140.22. Total warrants in the amount of $475,447.86.
Motion to approve the warrants as represented.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion, we have a second, roll call, please.
Alderman Ludwicksen.
Aye.
Alderman Rosenthal.
Aye.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero, we have a section called Public Comments, Non-Agenda Matters. Do we have anyone to turn anything in?
No, I don't have anything else.
All right. We had our executive session, action on executive session, we took care of adjournment. Motion to adjourn, please.
Excuse me, before we adjourn?
Yes, sir.
What was the topic that we were talking about earlier? Alderman Rosenthal?
Alderman Rosenthal, you're being asked a question.
What was the topic that we were discussing earlier that we wanted to add to the workshop for next session?
Yeah, I was going to, after you, I was going to bring it up before
All right, I'll let you run away with it, then.
Okay. I'd like to add to the workshop agenda disposition and allocation of the proceeds that we're going to receive from the sale of the property, by pre-ruining property. Make that, I would request making it a workshop item. At the next workshop.
Well, there was, there was another topic we were discussing earlier that we said we were going to just move toward.
The stormwater, a stormwater selection index?
Yes, yes.
Stormwater magic selection?
All right, so we add both of those items.
Okay.
Prioritization, the elements of prioritization.
Correct.
Yeah.
Anything else?
That's, I think we got enough.
Motion to adjourn, we have it?
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderman Ludwicksen.
Aye.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Alderman Rosenthal.
We are adjourned, thank you.